I got us at 5:30.
You're good.
All right, we're on the call of June 12th, Planning Boarding Zone Commission Meeting to Order. Greg, would you do the roll call, please?
Yep. Blumer?
Here.
Steve Benedetto?
Here.
Whitler?
Here.
Poisey?
Here.
Olten?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
And should we note also that we have a consultant online with us, Jeremy Fad and Chad Hanson is present? Should we note that, please?
Yeah.
And yourself, of course. Okay. Everybody got a copy of the minutes, May 22nd? Before I ask for a motion to approve, is there any issues or corrections or additions?
I had a question on page two, new business, section I, and it was my comment that I, discussion regarding community DK ordinance? I don't know what that is. What's a decay ordinance?
I don't know either.
I'm sure I didn't discuss that.
Are you suggesting we strike that?
Yeah, but I don't know what the proper one was. I don't know what to replace it with.
I wondered about that, too. I just wasn't sure.
I think the discussion on that was, we were talking about the lawns and maintenance, the weeds and stuff, and I think the discussion got into like a community decay ordinance.
Oh.
Not for me.
It's just terminology then. So we were talking about something specific and then maybe in a broader sense, there's a terminology.
Yeah, Kevin Anglin might have used the term for what you were describing, Sandy.
Do you want to strike it or not?
I would strike it because I don't know what it is. So I would just strike the whole discussion regarding community decay.
Can you comment on that?
Can you tell me exactly where we are again?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell me exactly where we are in the document again?
Section five, I.
Page two, business development, I, the last two lines, Conley, discussion regarding community decay.
Okay.
I'm sure if I can't remember, it couldn't be that important. The other thing that I would suggest is that since other people read these, like down under five on that same page, BAFOs are referred to, but we don't know what that is. Having too many of those abbreviations or...
Do you want to have that spelled out?
I'd like to have it spelled out once at least.
Can we do that? And what is it?
I don't know. BAFO.
The term Kevin was using, I don't know the exact thing, but it has to do with the agricultural farms, like chickens, cows. A zoning difference.
Maybe we'll do it in the future. Okay.
And spelled out.
Oh?
And then the...
Consolidated animal feeding operation.
Stand or con...
Yeah, a CAFO is a confined animal feeding operation.
Consolidated animal feeding operation. Okay. Does he put that in there? Anything else?
On the next page, under six resources, Anglin, I guess I just don't remember a discussion on limiting landscaping percentages on lots. Did we discuss limiting landscaping?
No, it was something that was a captured comment from the forum. Right? And so we were talking about what the list contains, and that's why it came up.
One of the suggestions on the forum was that...
To limit the landscaping.
Yep.
Okay.
So I think that should stand.
That was it.
That's it?
Yep.
Marie, say you have anything?
Nothing different, thank you.
Nope.
Y'all wanted to know why we were limiting the landscaping, but in that context, it makes sense because we were...
We were.
Just a comment to me.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, hearing no other changes, I need an amendment to approve the minutes as amended.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Blumer?
Yes.
Steve Benedetto?
Yes.
Whitler?
Yes.
Poisey?
Yes.
Olten?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Okay, communications with the board, urban renewal, Jeff?
They're planning a tour of the urban renewal district area next Monday, and I believe they're meeting here at 5:30. That's in place of their June 10th meeting.
Okay, and next Wednesday, what's the date of that?
The...
Tom?
Next Monday.
Next Monday is, the date is?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
June 10th. Seventeenth, I mean. June 17th.
At what time?
Five thirty.
Are we posting that publicly?
We did announce it at, we did announce it at the city council meeting last night, but we can post it.
Should we post it?
Well, it's open to anybody that wants to attend. I don't know how, why, I don't know if we need... I don't think there's going to be a quorum at that meeting, so it's...
I'm looking at transparency. If we don't post it, somebody's going to say why we didn't make it so. Do we post it?
Doesn't hurt to post it.
Okay.
Easy to do.
That's it.
Okay. Sandy, City Council?
Yes, Doug Miller, last night, was moved to the finance, admin and finance, Doug Miller,
Okay.
was moved to the finance, admin and finance committee, and Chelsea Tupin was moved over to land use and planning. Doug's expertise with finance made it a better plan. There was a discussion on camping on city-owned land. Right now, the way the ordinance reads is that you can camp on privately owned commercial property for up to 14 days, and we've had some suggestions, in particular Alpine Lodge, that if we would relax that, then we could use it as workforce housing as an idea. So the discussion kind of went that perhaps with a temporary use permit for 30 days, that the, those only employer-sponsored RVs that could park there, and we could renew those 30-day permits up to four months, kind of as an idea of providing workforce housing by doing that. The other discussion is camping on city-owned land. We all know that there are campers that park up and down our streets and drape their electrical cords over the sidewalk. And we're working on writing something up to be further discussed, where there'd be no generators, the electrical cords are over sidewalks, would be covered. It would have to be directly in front of the landowner, no charge, maybe 14-day limit. So we're just kind of kicking that around a bit. And we did discuss the open planning board position. Apparently, it missed Carbon County News, otherwise we were hoping to appoint somebody last night. So we're another couple of weeks out. It did make it into Carbon County News this week.
I'm sorry?
It did make it into Carbon County News this week, so that's it.
Tell me what, you said resident supported, what was that?
It would have to be, you mean for the...
For the packing, it had to be...
Employer-supported. It would have to be employer-sponsored if it were in a privately-owned commercial lot. So we had to, commercial, privately-owned commercial, and city-owned streets. So the, and the city-owned was the one that would have to be parked in front of the landowners. In other words, if you want to have somebody come and stay for a couple of weeks and they bring their RV, perhaps they could park it in front of your place, no generators, they can use your electricity as long as they draped the sidewalk, kind of thing. So we're just kicking that around.
Now, if they park in the yard, like in the backyard, then that's private.
That's, yeah, that's...
Either residential or commercial.
Yeah.
But right now, they can only do it 14 days?
On the city-owned streets?
No, he's talking about private.
Yeah. Private, you can...
On private property, according to zoning, but I'm not sure that the...
How can you enforce that?
That there's no ordinance that way.
Is that something we're going to have to review?
I think that's in zoning, but there's no ordinance to that effect.
Jeff? I thought, I thought a couple of years ago, the city passed an ordinance related to zoning, actually making it more restrictive.
I thought so, too. I don't remember.
In fact, I think it said, no camping in the city.
Polly would remember.
Dave, do you have it?
Do we have our consultant planner look into that? Dave, you got a comment?
I was going to say, because there were two issues that I heard raised. One was private commercial property, or private property that was commercially zoned, which was the 14 days.
Yeah.
And then I also heard a comment about parking in the public right-of-way, which currently is not allowed at all.
Well, you're allowed to park there, but not sleep in your camper.
Yeah, you're not allowed to. So parking is allowed, camping is not in the public right-of-way.
So that's what Jeff, that's what you're talking about?
And, and one of, there were multiple ideas being batted around, but it came up, the conversation that we had when I was on planning board, you know, what can you legally do and not do? I mean, that's legal parking, so you can't say in front of your house, you have some special claim to it. But there was an idea of having, basically, a permit that you assigned, but that permit, or that somebody could apply for a camping, but that permit required the local number of somebody there. Basically, who are you going to call if there's a problem or a complaint? And so there was just, are there ways that it can be approached? As far as whether that comes to planning board to make a recommendation, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. Now, now we're back to your question of, if our planner has input, Jeremy, is that something that would traditionally go through planning board before it goes to council? Or how would you picture that sort of discussion going?
I mean, I can look, I can look through the current zoning and see what the current zoning says. And then I can provide you feedback at the next meeting on what the current zoning says, and then I think we go from there. But if, you know, if it currently allows for RVs to be occupied on private property and you want to change that in some manner, then yes, it would have to go through the planning board. You know, it'd be a zone change, you know, it'd be a zone text amendment that would have to go through the planning board, public hearing, and then the council and a public hearing before adoption.
And what I don't know is if that restriction is currently in the planning, in the zoning documents, or if it's an ordinance. And the one that I'm aware of is it was ordinance, and it was an ordinance, but it wasn't codified in municipal code.
Well, I do know that RV parking issues was on our wish list. And I don't want to create work because we've got plenty to do in the next three months. But I would like a clarification, Jeremy, and then if there's a recommendation, I'd like to hear that as well.
Sure. I mean, yeah, most of the regulations I work in, or most of the places I work in, we do not allow occupation of RVs on individual lots. That's been the typical, most zoning regulations I see across the state of Montana do not allow occupying or living in RVs on individual lots. In some instances, we have to where you can apply for a temporary use permit for a hardship. For instance, if somebody's house burns down, right, and they want to live in their RV while their house is being, you know, rebuilt, that sort of thing, we allow for that sort of thing to come to the planning board for, you know, a temporary use permit type process. But in most situations, where I currently work anyway, we don't allow that, so.
What's your pleasure, Jeff?
Well, I think, as Jeremy explained, if it's, becomes a zoning issue, especially in residential neighborhoods, in terms of whether it'll be allowed or not allowed and under what sorts of conditions or criteria it would be allowed. So, you know, the things that come to mind is connectivity to the sewer system and some other...
So, I mean, do you think we need to put it on the hire list to review now or not?
Oh, I guess I would see it as, once we get through the growth policy and then, and then,
Okay.
and then, you know, deal with it when we start the review of zoning regulations that comes after that, that's the next step after the growth policy.
If and when we ever get to it, I was hopeful that there could be something in there to deal with parking too close to the corner where you don't have sight distance.
Oh, I know, that's right. Yeah, I totally agree with you there. The number of near misses I've had at 13th and Broadway are on...
Yeah.
But do you want to hold off on it for a while?
Yeah, just, I would need people to help me remember.
Okay. Teresa?
I'm thinking, we don't have a choice of holding off on it if land use, the steering committee is driving that right now or pushing for it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Discussing.
Just discussing?
Okay.
So I don't know what that means or how, what kind of priority list the steering committee is looking at, but, so you understand where we are with it.
Yeah, that's why it raised more questions, and I can take those back to the committee and...
Okay. Marie, do you have a thought on this?
Well, you know me, I'm not wanting to add anything to the list, so. I say, do we have, is there a problem that we need to address right now? And until it comes to us, I don't see a pressing.
The reason why land use in particular is looking at this is the Alpine Lodge is for sale.
Oh, I see.
And there are six RV spots there, and it, they've been asked more than once whether or not those could be used for workforce housing. So that's what started the whole ball rolling.
Let's do this, Dave, go ahead.
I liked your initial, which was basically, I think step one is, we have our planner go through and review it and see what we do have in the zoning document. And then I think there's a second, what do we have that is in the municipal code?
Yeah.
Because you got to know where you're starting from before you can do anything.
And what if the municipal code is different from zoning? Is it just whichever is the strongest?
Zoning should be updating municipal code.
Jeremy, do you want to weigh in on the order of precedent, or order of precedence between zoning and municipal code? I have my opinion, but you're the expert.
So, I mean, working with city attorneys, typically zoning applies to individual lot development, not public rights of way. So, for instance, if your zoning code says RVs, you can't occupy an RV within a certain district or whatever, that would apply to individual lots within that district, not to the public right-of-way. Your street, you should have a separate code section that deals with streets and roads within the community. That section should identify how RVs are treated within the right-of-way. For instance, parking of, you know, trailers on the street, you know, that sort of thing. So that, that section of code would need to be updated to, if you wanted to specifically address occupation of RVs within the right-of-way. That's, does that answer your question?
It does, and it may have answered the original question, which is municipal code is set by council. Is there a role and guidance or input from planning board before the council takes on the municipal code elements?
Um, so for zoning, yes, for sure, right? Zoning, zoning needs to be reviewed by a planning board slash zoning commission.
So if it's lot use, then yes, zoning, but public right-of-way?
Public right-of-way, not necessarily. I think that's up to the city council on whether they want to involve the planning board in that discussion and get a recommendation from them. But there's no requirement in law that requires the planning board to review other code sections like street allowances and stuff like that.
Okay, what I'm hearing is then that it's not too much trouble, Jeremy. Just let us know where we stand so we're clear on where we are now, and then we won't do anything until we get direction from council or land use.
Yeah, I'm hearing two different issues. One of them is the lots, and then the other is the public right-of-way. And they are two different issues and two different matters.
And we need direction from council or before we, I'm not trying to create work, I'm with Marie. I'm not trying to create work. But I want to be responsible and accountable. So what I'm hearing is, we're going to get a summary of where we're at right now, for clarity, and then we'll wait and get direction from land use or council. Is that right?
Yep, I'll update you where we are.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that there was a discussion going on.
Greg and I'll work with Dave, and we'll come up with what currently is required in the city, so.
Yeah, and if, I'm not sure, if you could reduce it to writing and send it to me, I can share it with the planning board members.
Sure thing.
Rather than having an agenda item at our next meeting.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. And just so you guys all know, I'm on vacation next week, so prior to the next meeting, so. But I'll, I can have Greg work on it, too, and we can, we can look over when I get back and...
Okay. I don't see it as an agenda item, I just see it as an information.
Sounds good.
Okay. Sandy?
That's it.
Marie? Okay. For the sake of timing, I'm going to adjust the planning, the agenda a little bit. And Chad, if you're ready, I'd like to kind of see a review of where we are on the downtown master plan because I have a feeling we're going to spend a lot more time on the growth policy. So Chad, I have shared with the planning board members your memorandum of June 3rd, in which you laid out your plan of attack. And so all the planning board members have had that. So I'll give you the chair or the floor.
All right, thanks, Al. So like Al mentioned, I put together, following the last meeting, kind of a, you know, a summary of a proposal, if you will, for the focus groups based on the discussions. And honestly, the ball's kind of in your court now, if that's how you want to proceed. And then we need to try and pick a date, even though that'll be the most difficult part, and then start the outreach and setting up those focus groups.
Well, I shared it with the planning board members, and I had, Teresa, you had a comment?
Oh, boy, it was related to who's...
You wanted to make sure...
Who's being invited, who's doing the inviting?
Yeah.
It's not clear.
Did you hear that? I mean...
Yeah, I was, we would reach out to each of those groups you identified and we have on that list, or anyone else you identify, and let them know of the time and place and everything for the focus groups.
But GWE is driving the train.
Okay.
They're driving the train.
So, and so if it isn't clear, maybe there's a point of contact or there's some non-communication, you know, it would be good if you could let us know so that we can go to the next or other people and make sure that we're...
Right.
...holding them in.
Jeff, do you have any comments?
No, I, you know, I think there'll be a public notice of each of those focus group meetings and time and place and date.
Right. And we haven't determined yet whether we're going to try to do them all on one day or if we're going to try to spread them out. That's yet to be determined, is that correct, Chad?
Um, I mean, for efficiency and getting myself and Jim Jarvis down there, we'd like to do them on one day. But if that's not possible, we will do our best to work around that.
Yeah, and, and we discussed going into the summer months and the challenges facing this, and so it's going to be a bit of a challenge to find a good date. Susan, did you have anything, comments on this?
Um, not particularly, but Chad was present at the business committee the other day.
Good, I was going to ask him, and how did that go?
I thought it went well. What do you think, Chad?
Um, it was pretty short and sweet, and I answered the questions they had. Just kind of walked everybody through the process to date and kind of the focus groups and without getting too detailed, because there were still some, a lot of things up in the air, just the general, we're going to have these focus groups, we're trying to nail down a date. A couple of you were at the meeting, how do you think it went? I thought it went pretty well.
Marie, were you there?
I was there. Marie, you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it went well. They didn't have a ton of questions. They pretty much knew something was going to be happening. I think overall, they were pleased that Chad took the time to go to the Business Alliance meeting. There was that mention yet again that when the survey was done, they weren't part of it, and they thought that the survey was less than helpful.
It was terrible, yeah.
Yeah.
It was going the other way. Okay. So, so they were happy to see that their opinions are going to be valued.
Teresa?
Yep.
Chad, did you get any suggestions at this meeting of some stakeholders or focus groups that we may have left out on your list or not? Did they get that deep?
No, they didn't get that deep. And obviously, we would send an invite through the Business Alliance, which covers quite a few of the businesses in town. They, you know, again, expressed the same concerns we have that we're going into the busy season in July and August, are really busy, but they understand it's important and we're never going to find a perfect date. It did sound like it'd be, if we couldn't get it done by the end of June, that end of July, beginning of August, after 4th of July, and the Iron Horse Rodeo would be preferable. Is that the same thing, impression? I'm trying to remember who all was there, Susan and... That was like days ago, I've already forgot.
Sandy, were there? And how many of the different focus groups were represented?
Oh, geez, well, the Chamber was there, the Red Lodge Lodging Association was there, Red Lodge Mountain wasn't there, but they generally are.
Yeah.
I'm a Realtor, so I was there.
Yeah.
Trails.
Okay.
Quite a few of these groups were represented.
I think it's really important, especially with the Business Alliance, that you have to understand, a lot of these people wear a lot of different hats in the community. And, you know, I understand, I'm trying to, so this was originally a grant, correct, that went to Great West?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So if it, just know that, I mean, if it's not pertinent or relevant to the downtown businesses, I mean, it's overreached to say, oh, you have to do business this way, especially, I mean, so I think a lot of these business owners are just waiting for that meeting to come up. But I think it's, I think it's a good point to understand that, you know, to really understand the essence of what this plan is. And I think a lot of those business owners, that's the general feeling. Does that make sense? That probably doesn't make sense.
Well, I think that he covered the topics, you know, and so that gave them something to think about as well.
And I got pretty positive feedback on the four suggested topics as well.
Dave, do you want to add anything?
I just have a question, and it's about the timing and the urgency. Are we working on an artificial deadline here? Are we?
Yeah, sort of.
There's a deadline with...
What I'm saying is that we don't have a hard deadline. We just want to get it done, but we don't want to be in a hurry to be crappy.
Well, and is there a grant factor that does have a timeline that it has to be completed by for the funding? I don't know that main.
I think we...
But otherwise, you know, the difference between June and September is very small in a calendar, but very huge in availability.
Yeah, and we've already added one extension on this grant, I think.
Yeah. Cody's already extended.
And we already got one extension on the grant.
So does, is the grant have to be completed by April of '25? Do you know the deadline on that, Chad?
I don't know the deadline, but I can find out, and... I don't know the deadline, but I can find out, and I mean, most of these grants can be extended a couple times with, before they start getting irritated. The schedule we laid out was based on input from you guys and the city council and having the parallel path of the growth policy update and the downtown plan being done in September, or even adopted in October. So if you guys want to push that out a little, I mean, we're trying to meet your deadline, I guess, so.
I just think we have to figure out how it goes here, and then I I assume you're gonna have some telephone conversations, maybe one-on-one with a couple of these people prior to the forum. Um and then the forum is gonna be the real get down and get dirty uh on all these topics. Is that, that's what we talked about? Are we still on that plan?
Yes, I was gonna reach out to some of the key stakeholders ahead of the forums to get talking points for each topic. Yes.
Right. Okay, so to answer your question, I think it's fluid. I think it has to be fluid.
I I I guess I would say, I I would just say, and and artificial deadlines are okay, but you have to recognize that it is an artificial deadline, so you can properly prioritize everything else.
Well, every twice a month, we're gonna be figuring out where we are.
On this downtown plan?
Yeah.
You might be better off with pretty much all of these people.
Yeah.
To have these focus groups in September.
Yeah. Yeah, it it may just work out that way. Like I said, w- we meet every twice, twice a month, and each time it's gonna come up, Chad. Where are we? How are we doing? And what do we need to be doing to get to the next step?
And and my only concern is if we're not making progress, we ought not to be spending money and resources, you know. If if like, we know where we are, but now we're gonna put it on hold until September, or we're ready for September, we can set it aside. I don't know that you necessarily need to, but that's that's your preference. If that's what you want to do, we'll make it happen.
Well, I can tell you this, that we've got three pretty extensive things coming before us in July and August, CUPs and zoning. And I anticipate that those will not be done in fifteen minutes. And so the chances are that we might be doing one of those at each meeting, and 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 growth policy and downtown planning may not even be on that agenda.
And 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 I think that was kind of what what I was saying, is you have statutory requirements. Um and and that's the three that you know of right now. I anticipate that there will be more development this year in Red Lodge than has, the numbers right now look like we're gonna have more than there's been.
Yeah, and and so we have to set priorities, and and what'll happen here, and I'm speaking out loud, Greg, is that as we put our agenda together uh for the next meeting, if downtown or growth policy is not on it, we'll inform Chad and 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 Kevin that, hey, you know, we're we're pushing it back, so.
Have a little Wednesday. We'll see you next time.
Yeah. Okay, Chad?
No, and and we'd appreciate that. I mean, if, on the downtown plan, honestly, we'd be spinning our wheels till we get the focus groups down down and get moving on those. That's the next big milestone. So if you guys do want to pause it, I don't want to take up your your meeting time or something needlessly, but.
I'm not sure I want to pause. I don't think I want to use the word pause. I think I want to use the word that you you'll be doing your homework uh prior to the forum. There's, you you do that at your, as your schedule uh permits. Once you have that in place and said, okay, I'm ready for the forum now. Then we'll have to sit down and 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 find a date, and and then that'll that'll set the schedule, because once we have the forum or the o- open meeting or the town hall, whatever you want to call it, and we get that data input from the public and 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 the focus groups and the stakeholders, then I I anticipate that we will probably see at least a draft of something. And, you know, then things will click along. Does that make sense, Jeff?
Yeah, I I, yeah, it does. I, when you're done, I I have a question for Chad.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh well, I, you know, you know, Chad gave us a draft document that uh that you know, that outlines at least a draft to date, and I guess I'm kind of wondering in this interim if it's worth worth us, or us individually at least, taking a look at that draft and and providing comments in some format in terms of uh at least similar to what Bill Foisey, you know, outlined, those kinds of comments. Not looking, you know, basically looking at content and then summarizing those comments and providing those to to Chad in in the interim.
Well, he's got the Foisey comments, and he's gotten some comments from us in terms of our meeting. Um, I would say this, um personally, I'd I'd like to see a draft after this stages of meetings here, because um I'm expecting there's gonna be some significant adjustments and changes to what we've sent. Your thoughts on that, Teresa?
I'm kind of torn. I I did, I did create some markups and comments.
Yeah.
You know, we received it, what, two meetings back?
Yeah.
I didn't share those.
Yeah.
And I I don't know how useful they would be without having the forum input.
Yeah.
And I don't know how how great a change that causes. I just don't know.
Marie, you have a thought on that?
Well, it's just the overall thought where it just, especially this time of year, it does need to be pushed back. The other thought I had was you can't, if it's, if it doesn't end up being a relevant product, it will end up on a dusty shelf somewhere, because that's just how Red Lodge business rolls. So if it's not relevant to the business community, um as far as questions go, and how and how this is going, they're, I mean, they're simply gonna run their businesses status quo, so I guess what you really need to figure out is what is your, what is the true purpose of this besides a grant? Uh but, you know, what what is the essence of what you're after here? Because that first questionnaire, that's the feedback I heard was there wasn't like a catch of a true essence of what we were, what we were trying to answer.
Yeah.
What the spirit of it was, so.
Sandy, you have a thought?
Well, I think the downtown um master plan ties into the growth policy. What does the community and the business community see for the downtown area specifically in the growth policy? Growth policy covers everything, but the downtown is vital.
Right.
Um, I agree. I think we should just set a date for sometime in September on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and let these groups know that this is the date, save the date, act like it's a wedding. I do think it has relevance, simply because it's gonna be part of the growth policy.
But to Jeff's question, we've got a preliminary preliminary draft. I I'm not sure you want to go through that and comment on before we've gone through these steps.
I don't. I don't want to, I don't want to look at it twice. I just assumed have them incorporate uh the outcome of the focus groups.
That's what I'm after, right there. Okay.
Incorporate that, let's do it once.
Chad, so we're gonna wait till after you've had your conversations, after the forum, get a draft, and then that's when we'll get after it right there.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us on downtown?
Uh I don't, unless you guys have questions for me.
Anybody? Are we okay? Okay?
Hearing nothing.
Hearing nothing. Yeah, oh, we.
There's Jeff.
Yeah, so so I've I've heard, you know, we're gonna have meetings with focus groups, and then I've heard the term forum. And I'm thinking those are two separate things, and I just want to make sure that we're.
Well, I I'm not sure what we call it. I've called it a town hall, a public meeting, a forum. When I say forum, I'm referring to when the focus groups and the public and everybody are together there. Maybe we should call it a town hall. I I'm not sure.
No, I I mean.
I've interchange the words on meeting the same thing.
So. I think that the, at the forum.
Yeah.
Several focus groups get together and talk about their thing.
Right, okay.
Okay. We're we're talking about this proposal, though, in September.
Yes.
Yes. Whatever you call it.
All right, thanks, um Chad. All right, uh moving on to growth policy, is that gonna be you, Chad, or Kevin, or both, or who?
You're stuck with me. Kevin's on vacation this week floating the Smith River, so.
Um, we have received your uh document of changes, and we have all seen um the red line.
I haven't seen it.
Burden to this.
I haven't seen anything.
We haven't seen anything on growth policy.
No.
I sent this. And and then you didn't get the red line?
No. I even checked today. It says Ale.
I know, I haven't got any.
Anything from Ale?
Yeah. I went down Ale Blumer.
Did I, did I, I was sure I sent it.
Yeah, you sent it.
To everybody.
Well, this side of the table doesn't remember it.
Well, I I didn't get it. I'm sorry. I I looked.
Well, how can you not get it?
I just, I don't know.
What was it? I mean, the growth policy's many, many, many pages.
Three documents.
There was three documents.
Three pages.
Um. Uh. Don't tell me I screwed up.
Is it in your draft?
I'm I'm just.
Maybe it wasn't. I don't know why it would suddenly.
But I'm in the same boat.
Out of the box solution. I looked purposely.
And I sent you the the.
I didn't see anything growth. Let me do it.
How many pages you get?
He said that.
Oh, it's a bunch of pages.
He sounded like a bunch of pages.
Growth policy, because I couldn't believe I didn't.
All right, I sent it on the five fourteen, and it's, and it um.
That was forever ago. Oh, you mean it precedes the last meeting?
What was the header on it? On the email?
That's the business development, seven attachments.
I see bare toothed community forum growth policy on the fourteenth.
Yeah, the the infrastructure things.
Public comments.
So Al, if it helps you, Kevin sent all those documents to you on June sixth.
Are you talking about this? I got that?
That was before the Pete Fratelli thing.
Are you talking about that?
I have nothing from Al Blumer with attachments after six-three, so if he sent it to you on six-six. I I don't count, but.
I sent one with a bunch of attachments.
On five-fourteen, and those are all the comments from the forum.
What I can do, Al? Cause I can pull them up here on the screen and walk everybody through what Kevin provided last Thursday. And then we can get it forwarded to everybody for their review.
Okay, first of all, would you pull up the one that has Red Lodge growth policy changes?
The the outline with the bullets?
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the high points, the talking points Kevin put together for me. Let me.
Pull that up.
Give me one second here to share my screen.
Yeah.
I'm looking for this one.
I've got all those comments.
Okay, does uh, did that show up for you guys?
Can you make it bigger?
About double the size?
That's his, there's the screen. Does that work?
Yeah, I got nothing.
Okay, hang on here. On the six-four, I sent you, all of you, the unapproved minutes. Did you get those?
I got those.
Yeah?
Unapproved minutes. That's the three minutes.
Yeah.
On six-four.
The unapproved minutes, I sent those.
Right.
Those I got.
Got that.
Okay. Uh. All right, go ahead, Chad. I I think somehow or another, my fault. Shit.
Don't forget in the minute.
Write that down.
All right, on uh five-eleven, I sent growth policy update and growth policies.
I see that. Was that it?
Yeah.
Unless he said that he sent it to you on the sixth, which makes that an impossibility.
On the eleventh, all I have is growth policy forum dash presentation.
Yeah, that's all I have.
And then on the fourteenth, just the uh public comment.
I sent them all to Danae and asked her to send them out.
Oh, well, let's go looking for Danae.
Ouch.
Okay, I will send them out as soon as I can.
Yeah, thank you, Al. Sorry. Don't put that in a minute. Put it in a minute.
Put the swear jar on there.
Okay, Chad, let's let's try to salvage this, that's what we can.
So, what I'd actually like to do, Al, I'm gonna pull up. So Jeremy, or uh, not Jeremy, Kevin sent over last Thursday the draft uh growth policy. Again, it is a very rough draft. There's a lot of formatting that has to occur. He also put together a summary of some of the major changes to the growth policy from the twenty twenty growth policy. And I'll run through some of those highlights with you, and we can provide the more detailed list. And then he did the word where you can compare two documents and all the changes, but there was so much formatting change that it's really difficult to read. But we did put that together for you as well. Um, so not being a Zoom expert, is the twenty twenty-four, the growth policy draft up on your guys' screen?
It is.
Okay, so one of the biggest changes and first things um that they did is they pulled all the uh goals and objectives. They were interspersed between, in the different sections in the twenty twenty growth policy. And they summarized them right up front and put them into these tables, broken out by the different subjects. Um the same categories, pretty much from the the forum. You guys had the bare-toothed front. Um a lot of the same objectives and action items here. This is probably the area that um we're looking for the most input from you guys to review, um see if those are on point, uh if you want changes, additions. But they did, Kevin pulled them all out and put them into this more tabulated format right up front, so that they're really emphasized. It 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 hopefully will be a little more clear and concise. Um people don't want to read all two hundred pages. And so these are the start, uh with the goals and objectives, and then everything, you know, following in the reporter's support documentation, if you will. And from the goals and objectives, I'm just kind of scrolling through them. Then it rolls right into the action plan. And again, this is where we'll need a lot of guidance and input from you guys to make sure that we're on the right track. And these reflect what you guys want to see in there, and it it reflects Red Lodge and, you know, this is not our plan, it's your plan. We wanted to reflect the community. So that's kind of the biggest change, the formatting, is those are pulled out up front. And then throughout the document, some of the changes from twenty twenty to the twenty-four draft, um they kind of broke down some of the narrative and tried to be more succinct in areas, just to, you know, get rid of some of the extra words. They consolidated the process through multiple sections into one more concise section. Uh the planning jurisdiction goals were eliminated. Plan maintenance goals were eliminated. Instead, the basis of maintaining the document is discussed throughout the plan in the narrative. The sustainable form was eliminated. From the twenty twenty document, any items that were their own sections were moved into the themes they fall under. For example, community entrances um were a separate section in twenty twenty. Uh now it's been moved, and we put it under the land use with the other similar items. Similarly, open space goals were moved to the natural resources section, just trying to make it more streamlined. We did add in a whole section on subdivision review, which meets the new statutes from the MCA stuff. And so the new growth policy, the twenty twenty-four, should meet all current statutes and requirements. This is pretty long, but here's the stuff on the subdivision review and the MCA, and all this has to be included in there. So that's really high level. Um and I'll take the blame too with Al that we didn't get it out to everybody before. I'll take the blame too with Al that we didn't get it out to everybody before tonight for you to look at. Thought you'd be studying it intently over the weekend, but maybe we did you a favor. Um. So that's the plan is we've got the draft pulled together. There's a lot of formatting left to do. Um. When Kevin sent it on Thursday, some of the maps weren't done, but he sent a subsequent email with all the maps and we can get that forwarded out as well. Um, we gotta do a lot of formatting and printing it up, but the big thing is we wanna have you guys go through, look at it and really focus on the goals, objectives and action plans and let us know if we're on the right track. So with that, I don't wanna read it to you verbatim, but uh definitely open it up to questions and see what your thoughts and any concerns you might have or where you'd like us to go from here.
Well, because of my screw up, we're kind of stuck because they don't have it in front of them. So I think what I'm in the process now of putting it all together and sending it to them and in fairness to them, um, not unless they have some general comments. I don't know that they can, because your the the changes document, um, and the red line draft and the PDF document made it pretty clear and I I I went through it. Um, I kinda liked it, but um I need to hear from them.
Yeah, what Al is referencing is this is that word document that I I I alluded to and you can see there's just a ton of red lines, but it it does compare everything that was changed from the twenty twenty to the twenty twenty four. If you wanna wade through it.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, you should have it.
Now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful to look at.
So. Yeah. What I what I sent everybody, I sent them the red line copy. I sent them the PDF copy, which is clearer to read because the red line copy, the charts and the graphs were really hard to read, so but they can read it on the PDF. And I also sent the list the list of changes that you highlighted.
Yep. And then did Al, let me check, were you on, there was a follow up on Friday, the seventh. Kevin sent over, yeah, all the figures. Did you get that email?
The map?
Yeah, with the maps and the figures.
Yeah, I I'll send them in a separate file because it's huge.
Yeah, there's there's quite a few of those.
Hasn't come through yet, Al, but I believe you.
Oh, checking and checking and checking. It must be big.
Yeah.
This has been kind of a day for me.
I know. It's like a Monday only.
We still appreciate your sense of being. Chad, um, I'm sorry, but um I think until they get a chance to read the documents that we just probably ought to wait till the next time we discuss it.
That's fine, and and if you guys even wanna skip a meeting and take a few weeks to go through everything, there's a lot of information there and start getting it back to us. So Mary, help me out here. Where's the button to stop sharing my screen? I'm trying to.
Um, generally, there's a a bar. Um, the other alternative is we can do this. I'll share my screen. Now you're not doing it and now I'll do a stop sharing mine and now we're back.
Perfect.
Magic.
I think it was hidden under the meeting is being recorded bar.
Al?
Okay, question, Al. So in this red line version, does it already contain the updates for the missing uh sections that Cody had outlined for us a long time ago?
Yeah.
So it's worth checking.
And and the reason I say you both is it's the red line sometimes just overwhelms you. You have it. There's page after page after page of red line. Then you find it.
Yeah.
So what I did is I put the red line and the PDF side by side because the PDF is what the what the current draft looks like. Um. I owe everybody a beer, I think.
Okay, it hasn't come through yet, but it must be really big.
It's a big file.
Does the the old one was over two hundred pages? Is the new one gonna be less?
We're working on that. It's two hundred and two pages, I think, right now. But we're trying to cut it down.
I got it. I can't wait to read it after the meeting.
What, you can't?
As soon as it's over, I'm getting into it.
You know.
Still checking.
Mine is, I got mine.
It is a big file, so.
Here's the info to Al.
Chad?
Yes.
Go ahead. Um, I'm just curious. How does ours compare size wise with, anecdotally, I hear from developers, how come here's running regulations or twice as big as Phoenix? Or Denver or? As you look at our documents, where are they size wise compared to other municipalities you work with?
You you know, I'm probably not super Wilbers because I don't do planning, obviously. I do know, as Kevin and Jerry have been working on it, they say it's the most in-depth and complicated growth policy they've ever worked on. Um, but maybe Jeremy or Greg could weigh in and say what they've they've got a lot more experience in the planning arena than I do.
If I if you've got your planners that are looking at it, if one of their recommendations is you have the most complicated in depth, maybe that's input we need to hear also.
Yeah.
Someone was headed to say, cause I thought we were gonna really get into this tonight, so I should bet thoroughly, but anyway, um. I think that this draft is a lot clearer and more direct than our current document. Got things broken out and the drafts are really clear, but anyway. Um, the uh the maps are gonna come to you, they're such huge files, they're gonna come to you as as attachments of under OneDrive. You might have to open them.
Yeah, I'm not gonna bring this to my phone.
Jeff?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I looked at the first section and it it is, I do agree, the new document is
Yeah.
is much clearer to follow, especially looking at the goals and objectives. Where in the old document you had goals and a couple of pages later was objectives and now in that table format, they're they're right there side by side, so I think that helps quite a bit in terms of just readability and finding and finding things.
Did you get it yet?
I've got it.
Yeah, we got it. I'm not opening it. Too big.
I I'm gonna be honest, I didn't go review the twenty twenty growth plan, but I did read through Kevin's draft. And I thought it was, it's lengthy, but I thought it was pretty easy to read and well laid out in a logical manner, so.
Um, one thing I noticed when you listed um the documents, forget which page it was, you didn't li- list the downtown master plan as an attachment to the growth policy. You had a whole bunch of other ones in there, but you didn't have that.
Um, that may just be because it's not completed yet. But I mean, the intent was that they would get adopted at the same time and definitely wanna incorporate recommendations from the downtown master plan into the growth policy.
Um, then the other comment I had is, and it's it's just my Word document, the capitalization of city, when you should capitalize it and when you shouldn't.
You know, we can do grammar.
Or should it always be capitalized?
If you're talking about Red Lodge capital?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it it varies, but like I said, we'll go through and once we get the meat of it in there, we'll do a really good formatting and get QA QC and and we'll have Sherry probably go through it and she's our grammar Nazi and she'll help us fix any of that.
All right.
Usually it's Dave.
Well, Chad, if there's no other questions from the board, um, I'll take the hit and we'll try to get it covered here pretty quick in one of the next meetings.
Okay.
The only thing I'm put out there when you review it, the infrastructure section should be pretty tight because I wrote that one, so. If you have comments on it, it will help, but that was pretty easy for me pulling all that stuff from the P R, the things we've done, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, could we maybe spend a little bit of time talking about how to make, as we go through the document in terms of comments? In terms of, I don't know if it's easier to do it within the PDF format, but it was, took me a while to figure out how to print the document along with my comments.
Yeah.
Along the side versus in a Word document, you can use track changes and and things kinda follow through. So I guess I'm I'm just asking, you know, what's the, so we don't end up with six different formats in terms of is there kind of an efficient way to, as we're going through the document, to make comments? Uh, we'll just kinda open that up just for discussion and see how the board wants to proceed.
Well, I know that if we do markups in PDF, you've got control of the, well, let's just say, if you open it in Word, everybody's settings are different and it's all over the place, you know. Numbers, the pages are different, the margins are different, everything's different. But if we do it in PDF, we don't really have a way for everybody to put onto it unless it's in a Google Drive or something, but we don't want, I mean, the control should stay with Great West, right?
Yeah, um, what I did is, because I started to do it on the red line and it just got ridiculous, so I went back, you know, the beginning. So what I did is I just had a page and as I went through, I might note side notes on page so and so, this heading said page so and so, this heading said page so and so, this heading.
That's probably what I would, that's what I would do too, cause I'm not that familiar with.
And somehow the way we've done it in the past, maybe it's not the most efficient, is is we took the the document in sections and say, okay, does anybody have anything to add to this section? And then we went to the next section, the next section and the next section. Um.
Yeah.
I I guess I'd like to hear some feedback from Chad in terms of, because he's gonna have to put all this together.
Right.
You know, one thought is we submit our comments to Chad and he compiled, compiles those into a a single document that we look at where all the comments are and then we go, then we go through it as a board and decide.
Are you willing to do that, Chad?
Well, I don't know.
What's his cheapest resource that he has that he can put on that? Cause I don't want Chad doing that.
Chad's not gonna do that, I promise you, Dave. Kevin would end up doing that.
A staff person?
Well, I.
I don't think it has to be in writing.
I guess I'm just throwing that out as an idea. I'm not saying that that's what we should do. I'm just trying to get sort of a consistent, sort of a process in place. A tradition.
So if we're all reading it independently and all marking it up as we merrily go along, right, how do we feed that in and get?
Cause some of our comments are gonna be the same. Some of them are gonna be exactly the same.
Yeah.
That's why if you just go by section and ask what everybody's, you know, comments are for that section, you're gonna have some duplicates, great.
I also remember you distinctly saying that's not what you wanted to do this time.
Well, because this time, we were only gonna look at the areas that we changed. We weren't necessarily gonna look that hard at. Um, my question is this, if we all put our comments together, is there a place that somebody would collate those? Just somewhere like we did at the at the forum, because some of them are gonna be the same.
And 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 I guess my question is, um, for for Chad, that's something you see you're doing or do we throw a W W C intern at it?
Whatever you'd like to do and, you know, we've dealt with the PDFs with the markup comments or the the Word and we could send you the document if you wanna track changes. Or the separate written, you know, section so and so, here's a comment. But yeah, David, it'd be great if that could be compiled. Um, we can compile it too. We have a couple of interns. Um, Kevin could do it, but just time wise. Get in one document that you guys can review and like you say, if you see duplicate comments, then you know that everybody's on board there and that helps a lot too.
Well, I guess my my question to Chad and maybe to Jeremy is just based on their experience in working with other planning boards, as you've gone through and gotten feedback and just uh and reactions to the draft document. What was, how how were those, how how did how did other planning boards handle the process? And how did you incorp- how did you incorporate the the suggested changes or edits to the draft? To be incorporated into the final? That's, I guess that's the essence of my question.
So again, I'm I might be getting out of my comfort zone, so maybe I'd defer and see what Jeremy has for an idea.
I if, so what I typically do is I I just have each planning board member send us um their comments and we we compile those and and make those edits um into the docu- into the draft document and then send it back out for, you know, for for review to make sure we made those those changes, right? Um, so I think, I I I think the appropriate thing to do would be just have each planning board member provide comments. And then either, I mean, we, I think we can do it either way, either W W C can compile those comments for the planning board into one document. And then and then you guys can review that and then send it on to um uh Chad and Kevin, or just send those directly to them and and have them do that. I guess I could, I could go either way. That'd be up to you, but I think it would be appropriate for each planning board member to provide those comments. And then have somebody, either us or or Great West, compile those.
I think I heard Chad say he has that capability too, so we'll just send six streams of comments to Chad and then you'll find the cheapest resource to compile them.
Well, yeah, the most available resources will, it'll probably be Kevin working on it, cause he's gotta incorporate him into the draft anyway. My question, listening to Jeremy would be.
He is head at me. He's saying money is not what his concern is. He wants the intelligence resource doing the compiling. Did I translate the head shake?
Well. I think our city planner consultant has to be involved in this at some point. Because I'm, I have great trust in our planning board uh members, but if I make a suggestion that the rest of the planning board go, oh, yes, we're not gonna do that.
And then they change it.
And they, and so, um, at some point before it begins into the document, shouldn't we look at what the suggestions are?
Exactly. That's why I just think we should just do it as a board, like we have done in the past. Why should, I mean, everybody's gonna look at it, read it through, make a list of suggestions by areas. Then when you get to that area, we all discuss it and say, okay, this is it, what we'd like to have changed and then move on. I don't know why we're making it more difficult.
If it's not fixed, if it's not broken, let's not fix it. It might be a little more timely, but I think it would be a little more inclusive.
To me, if you gave six streams, somebody could go in and create that markup document. I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna mark it up as Bob. And I'm gonna log out and I'm gonna mark it up as Suzie and I'm gonna log out. So what you could get as you go into that is you could have everybody's comments independently.
Right.
That you could read in your own time.
Not that any of us would do that.
You wouldn't?
Go in and pretend to be somebody else and mark it up.
No, 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 I'm saying we have, we have, we have our planner compile those six streams of input into a single document.
Yeah.
Rather than taking, because Jeff presented something, I'm not taking that as fact. But Jeff's comments are represented, Suz's comments are represented, and then at the bottom, there's a planner's comment that said, Jeff's idea was stupid. I think you should do it this way.
That's where I'm headed. I I I want I want Jeremy in this as our planner, cause we we I I would like to send all our stuff to Jeremy.
Okay?
Okay, have have Jeremy compile it. He may look at it as a certified planner and say, well, it is. Or he may say, that's some good stuff.
That would be interesting.
I wanna see how he spells that.
And a minute.
And and then we look at that compiled and then we send it to Chad to incorporate.
Okay.
That's the way I see it. Jeremy, give me a comment.
Yeah, let so let's do this, uh since Greg is kind of the liaison of the planning board. Everybody send your comments. Well, I think, Al, it probably is appropriate for everybody to send comments to you, right? And then have you send them to Greg and Greg can then compile those into one document. And then I will work with Greg to review all of those comments before it goes back out to the planning board. And then the planning board can review that that marked up. and then the planning board can review that, that marked up document with everybody's comments in it. And then you can decide, you know, if maybe after reviewing them, maybe you wanna change some stuff before we send it on then to Great West.
I like that, because here's the other part of this too, is Jeremy and Greg are our planners and they're supposed to be doing all that. Chad is supposed to put the document together. He shouldn't be having to go through, you know, he's buying in our input, he shouldn't have to be able to do all that other stuff. And that's the way I see it.
And I, and I, I see that it's, we actually have two planners here. We have our specific project planner, we have our, our general statutory planner, but I also think there's value in having that second set of eyes on it, so I have no problem with that.
Well, Chad will see it, Chad will see it after we've made through the review.
And that's the second set of eyes, so I like, I like what you propose and how, how to do it.
Does that work for you, Marie?
Yes, it works.
Yeah, fine.
I'm still puzzling, not for a different reason. I don't have Word.
I don't like Word.
You can, you can do it however you want to do it.
However you want to and get it to me and we'll figure it out.
Do it, do it in an email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even if you write it in longhand.
I wouldn't do that.
Jeff, you okay with this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the process. I guess the other, the other, you know, Kevin's the other planner that's working on the growth policy, so, right? Jeremy, I mean, Chad.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin's the planner that's helping Jerry and I. He's doing the bulk of the hard lifting work on it.
Yeah, I'll let them figure that out.
So, so then the question to you, Al, is we have WWC combine six streams into one. Do we give it to Kevin or do we give it to Jeremy or you still wanna give it to Jeremy?
Give it to one, you give it to us first, so we all see what everybody else is thinking.
Okay. Well, nobody, they're gonna go through and add their comments, like this is a good idea, that's a bad idea, don't go there.
Who's gonna do that?
A planner.
Yes.
Is that planner, Jeremy or is that planner, Kevin?
But the document you get, I would like it to be a collective document from here. We starting out individual, then we're going collective.
Yeah, and WWC is gonna do that, we know that.
So he's gonna get the individual, but why does it have to be this hard?
That's what I'm saying.
He's gonna get the individual, he's gonna collate them together in a, in a group. We're gonna see, I'm gonna see what Teresa thinks.
You're gonna see all the comments.
I'm gonna see what Jeff thinks, he's gonna see what I think. I can guarantee you that that meeting, there's gonna be some adjustments and changes, guaranteed. And then that document comes out of this planning board and goes there.
Hey, I think that's a fantastic plan, Al. Um, the, the easy comments will be the ones where you guys all agree, but you're gonna have some comments where you disagree and by this process, you guys can work out how you ultimately wanna see it. It'll be easier for Kevin to incorporate that into the draft plan instead of going back and forth, so I, I love it.
The body is what this board thinks, not what I think. Okay? Does that work?
Yeah, and then we'll also have planner feedback on all those comments as part of our discussion, so that's great.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, Greg?
I, I'm just gonna point out, I heard two different things.
Shush.
Including two from you. So what Teresa just stated is what I heard the first time.
Yeah.
Collate and then add some planner feedback and then bring it to this board. And then the second version I heard you go to just a second ago was, no, 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 we're gonna see it before our planner puts input.
We're picking a nit.
We want planner input.
We're picking a nit.
Okay, are we good with planner input after the collated?
Because what happened when we collate, he's gonna be in the meeting.
Right, for discussion.
He's gonna be in the meeting, he's gonna be part of the discussion.
All right, I'm good, I'm sitting on my hands.
Yeah, Dave, when Greg, Dave, after Greg compiles all the comments into one document, I will review it. I will review all those comments and I will provide my feedback in that document. So you'll have all the planning board member comments in it, then I will provide feedback and then we'll send that to the planning board. And then at a meeting, they'll review that document, make changes.
With you. With him.
And then they'll decide when they wanna send that over to Great West.
That's, that's, that's what I understood, we were. All right, he just added another step, that's okay.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, good.
Are we good?
Good, yeah, I'm good.
Holy smoke. Good.
I didn't hear that with the nap, but we're good.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to do this conversation.
Well, thank you for that.
But then we, if we get the red line, we can settle that.
All right. Are we through with the growth policy for tonight?
Oh, yeah.
And I know we're gonna have a, at least one CUP next meeting and maybe we can do some growth policy next meeting, I'm not sure, we'll see.
Uh, both the CUP, or the CUP will be the 10th of July, because we have to do it 15, 15 days.
Oh, okay, so our next meeting is the 26th of June, we don't have a CUP that meeting?
No.
We don't? Oh, great.
Uh-oh.
Well, good. You hear that? Uh, Chad and Jeremy, that we'll probably be able to discuss both of these on the 26th of June.
On one of them.
Huh?
We're not gonna continue discussing the downtown master plan because there's.
No, we won't have anything, but we'll be doing growth policy for sure.
Yeah, on the 26th.
So keep, keep in mind also that all the planning board members have to get their comments into us. We have to have time to compile all those comments and I have to have time to review, so I, I, I'm guessing the next meeting, I mean, you know, you can keep it on the agenda, but I, I would be surprised if in two weeks we have.
All right.
Have all that done, but I mean, we'll certainly give it a shot.
We'll do our part by that time anyway, hopefully. What, is my time just about up?
I think so, Al.
Um, because I took away your dead clock, it is, it, it's, it's real close.
It's 6:46.
Okay.
There's gonna be a hockey game on right now.
No, it's morning.
Oh.
Don't try, Marie.
This has no minutes for this meeting.
Um, oh, we're gonna have minutes. Verbatim.
Thank you, Jeremy and Chad, I think we're done with the growth policy and the downtown master plan. Okay, staff committee, yes?
So I, I just, it's just a question.
Uh-oh.
Oh, Lord. If, if we're parking the master, downtown master plan till September, what does that do to the, I mean, we can start looking at the growth policy, but we also want to coordinate the timeframe that those are coming together. So what, what does that mean, if anything, to the process that we just outlined?
The, the master plan in my view is an addendum attachment to the growth policy.
Yeah.
So we can write the growth policy, if we get it done before the master plan is done, then it'll just be attached when the downtown is done.
And, and we'll have additional input?
On the downtown?
Not on the growth policy.
Growth policy, right, that's what I'm asking, so.
So you're suggesting that, that parts of the downtown plan be incorporated into the growth poly, policy as opposed?
Well, they have to, they have to be a tune, right?
And I, I think we should do that.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I, I think we can, if we can't, we'll wait till weekend. We're not gonna rush it.
I would also suggest that, you know, as we're, kinda go back to the conversation on comments on the growth policy, I would suggest not rushing it, okay? So don't, you know, we've had, we had that conversation on the downtown master plan. I, I would say that applies to the growth policy as well. So I, I wouldn't set you got, yourself a timeframe to have your comments but in two weeks or something, you know what I mean? Like, give yourself enough time to review the document thoroughly, right? The draft document thoroughly and provide good quality comments. That's, that's what I would say, I, I would say don't rush it.
No, I'm not putting a hard deadline on it, I would just say let's try to do it timely, let's be fluid, let's be responsible and do as much as we can between now and the 26th and whatever it takes after that.
Keep it moving, keep it moving.
Because I know July for me is just gonna be hard. Uh, I would ever have to get that on the table before July 1st.
So we only have one CUP on the, on July 10th?
Huh?
We only have one CUP on July 10th?
We've got the Timberline Town Home CUP, July 10th. Um, we're working on the public notices right now and then Spires doing a zone change.
When's that one gonna be?
The 10th as well.
On the 10th?
Yep.
Can we do two in one, in two hours?
Jeremy?
You should, you should be able to.
Spires came in front of us once before for a zone change and then changed their mind.
The, the Spires is a zoning change.
It's a zone, it's a zone, it's a zone map amendment is what it is.
Right.
They wanna change their.
Oh, it's on map.
Yep, the, 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 the PUD will stay the same, the PUD portions is gonna stay the same, but they wanna amend, uh, the R3 to R4 to allow for higher density multifamily development.
And, and that's basically because the PUD allows more density than what the underlying zoning did, which.
Correct.
So on the surface, what I've seen of it, that should go fairly quickly, but you never know.
I suspect that will go quicker than the Timberline Homes CUP.
Yes, I agree. So we'll.
I hope you understand this.
We're in staff communication now, okay? So what you're thinking is we're gonna do, uh, Timberline and Spires on the, on the 10th. Um. And Beartooth Clinic, we don't, that's, that'll probably be on into August or September.
Yeah, they, we sent them a letter back, they were incomplete, so we're, we're waiting for comments.
Is, is there any other ones on the, we know of other than those three?
No, we've got, we've got a couple of sign permits that, um, I'm discussing with Brian and Hannah right now.
Um.
See if they need review.
Okay, so our next meeting is June 26th and it sounds like that, at least in part, we, some growth volume discussion as far as we can go. Um, we, we won't get through it all, but we'll get as far as we can. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say that, that, that draft document, 68 pages, the PDF document, so, you know, I, I spent today, I mean, most of the day today just going through that first section that, that Chad went through, which was the goals, objectives and, uh, and, uh, that's as far as I got.
Okay, um.
But to go through, I guess if you're thinking in terms of going through the whole 68 pages and then sending comments.
We won't be able to do that in one meeting.
No.
Probably gonna be two, possibly three meetings.
September.
Because we're gonna hold to the two hour limit, right? Because I didn't even make 15 minutes today, but I mean, typically two hours.
Yeah, and it's hard to, it's hard to stay on after that.
Yeah.
You know, because you're focused.
So we'll just go as far as we can and then call it quits and go to the next step.
Yep.
Right, Jeremy?
Yeah, no, I think that's appropriate, I think you, you guys, I mean, I, you know, I, I just, like I said, I recommend, it's an important document. I recommend taking your time, right? And, and your, your comments are, are the most important comments besides public comment, uh, in this process, so.
Okay.
Um, just, I would say, yeah, I just think you're right on, just take your time and make sure that we capture everything um, that you wanna capture in this document.
I think that is back two weeks, because I thought I did what I didn't, I didn't do what I thought I did, but that was a failure to communicate between me and Danae and who was sending out what and what, so we gotta figure all that out. That was me, nothing but a thing.
Worse things can happen.
Um, okay.
Well, we have a good plan though.
Huh?
We have a good plan though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, anything else on staff? Anything from the audience?
Angela.
Angela, you got anything?
Nope, nothing, thank you though.
Um, under other business, a question came up today and I answered it and the person didn't like my answer, so I'm gonna bring it up today. Um, wanting to know when the initial drafts, proposed drafts or if the proposed drafts would be posted on the webpage before we've completed our work.
I'll call you back.
My answer was that our discussions are public and they can come here and be part of that discussion and we're gonna have an open forum and they can be part of that, but that we were not planning to post anything until we as a planning board had kind of said, I think this is where we're gonna go. Okay?
Yeah, if they wanna be part of the discussion.
Well, I, I think that if you're putting something half baked out there, it could lead to misinformation and confusion.
I totally agree, but that was my answer in this individual today and I just wanted to make sure we're.
Jeremy, what's your expert opinion so we can blame you when we relay that answer on next time?
So my recommendation is, well, uh, number one, you know, any, any document that Great West submits to the city is public information, right? So first and foremost, I think if somebody requests the document, I think you should provide it, right? Um, I.
But that's different than posting it.
Right, posting it on the website though, I think I would wait until after the planning board has reviewed it and provided comment and Great West has made those changes, because then you will open that up to public comment for 30 days or whatever, right? And you'll have a public hearing on that document before it goes to the council. And so that, when you open that up for public comment, that's the point where you will post that on the website and, and, and provide that opportunity for the public to comment.
And then the only request I would have then as our planners provide us documents, um, maybe if they have the draft watermark on them so that if we do share them, that at least is part of the document as well.
Yep, yeah, so I mean, I'm sure Great West will probably provide that when they provide that final draft for public comment.
There's a big difference in my mind between posting something on the web and making it available for the meeting so that the public can look at it and then come in and comment intelligently about what's being shared. So are we going to share it as part of the documents?
The resources?
For the meeting versus, I know, you know, to me, it sounds like we're saying, we're not gonna post it on the website for downloading, but, you know, making it available so that they can participate.
If somebody specifically comes and asks for a public document, the answer is we do it. Would you, would you have them go through a FOIA request, Jeremy, just to formalize it?
I, I wouldn't, I think if somebody comes and gets asked for it and, and it's been submitted to you guys from, from the contractor, I would provide it. Um, you know, ideally, they, you know, you're gonna provide electronically so that hopefully they have an, you have an email or something that provides that paper trail, um, so you can provide, you know, show that they requested it and you provided it.
So Al, are you okay with the, we're not gonna post it, but if you'd like a copy, I can get it to you.
Just I know it's a working copy.
Because it's a working document.
Yeah.
Our meetings are public. We're having this discussion publicly and I kinda like if, if, if we have provided it and they walk in here, they can hear what we're saying and as soon as we start passing out information before we've had a chance to do all our work, I think we just open up Pandora's box. I really do. I mean, we're not operating in a vacuum. We're reaching out to various groups and we're trying to pull in data as much as we can, our meetings are public, the forum's gonna be public. The document is a working, fluid document, um.
Al, is it, would there be any harm in saying on the agenda even, if it's gonna be discussed at the meeting, that the public could request an electronic copy?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose.
Because it would be nice, I mean, you wouldn't even know if you need to attend a meeting or not. If there's, you don't know what the content is that's gonna be discussed.
Or is there a version where we just make it available for inspection? You can come in and look at it and here it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might help if you market draft.
Yeah, but my cynical mind, they don't see the word draft.
Yeah, I know, I was just throwing it out there a class ago.
Yeah, that was, my thing is just watermark it.
Watermark it, draft right across in front of every sheet.
Well, that's what I told this, this person. I, I just said, hey, our meetings are public, uh, we're not posting anything on the, on the webpage until after it's been vetted by, uh, our consultants, our, our public forum, um, and the planning board. And then, and then, then, then that draft will go out and then that'll be the document that you can, we're not gonna send it to council until it's all been vetted.
Well, they're not gonna wanna read it anyway until it's done because it's a lot.
Yeah.
Does the person live within city limits? Could he, could that person be on the planning board?
This person could be on the planning board.
Come along, you can read all you want.
Al, are you comfortable taking this conversation offline and we'll come to a resolution that you're both good? I, I think what I hear is it's public information.
I just wanna be consistent and that I may not be the only one getting this, this question.
Fair.
And, and I would like all of us to respond it in a consistent manner, um, because each of us has, or. Um, cause each of us has our constituents and our friends and where, and where they went and asked me, they might have called Marie or they might have called Jeffrey. And I just want us to be consistent on how we respond.
And, and I think they should get it from the same source. So I don't think I should get a copy from Sue because I know Sue and I don't think I should get a copy from Teresa or Al.
No.
I think it should be a request that comes in and the city provides it.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if this individual had called Marie, I would have liked her to respond the same way the rest of us would.
Well, and I would have responded how you responded, because I agree with you. So, good girl.
You know, you know what I'm saying? We speak with one voice, not with
I agree.
Five or seven, or eight or ten.
Al, I, Al, I think, I mean, I think your statement is correct. Um, you know, in what you said is that, you know, the planning board is working on it. Um, once we are done working through the document, it will be available for public comment and there will be a public hearing. Um, you know, and that will be posted on the website. So I think your statement is correct. I think the, the flip side of your, of the discussion though is the, the Freedom of Information Act requirements, right? You, you, the city is a public entity. Great West is providing a, a product to the city. And that, that information, if it's requested, has to be provided. So we're not gonna post it publicly, right? We're not gonna have it out there just so anybody can grab it. But if somebody requests it, the city has an obligation to provide it.
We'll send all requests through you, Al. We'll tell them, ask Al.
We'll, we'll, rather than putting draft, we'll have a watermark that says half-baked.
All right, um, any other business or comments or whatever, Jeff?
I was just gonna, two suggestions. One is if a request does come like that, and, and I agree with the response that you gave. But rather than us individually handing out the document, that, that, I would add that they send an email or a request and it comes from the city.
And comes to the city that they're asking from.
Yeah, and not, not to us individually.
So in this case, would it go to Brian or, or would it go to Greg?
Um, and it's actually that, now that's, that back through the process, so quite frankly, I, I'd find coming to me, I think. Um, or the front office. There's either one of those is, is a gateway to-
Typically, it would go to our planner.
Well, my knee jerk would have been Greg.
I, no, because it's, uh, uh, generally, uh, 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 requesting a document would go through the, through the office, it's the front office, so.
And, and my other suggestion is kind of tearing off of the co- your comment about the, we had, these, these meetings are open to the public and they can come to the public meeting. It would be helpful in the agenda that we, instead of saying just discussion growth policy, you know, just highlight or, or list those sections of the, or those topics within the growth policy that are gonna be discussed during that meeting.
I think that's great. We did that last time, yeah.
Cause then if there is-
Yeah, we can do that, right? Greg, we, you know, you and I and Jeff can get together and make a guess about how far we'll go. You know, maybe we'll do it, if there's sixty-eight pages, we'll try to do twenty pages a meeting or something like that. I don't know, we'll come up with something.
It'd be easier for us too.
Huh? You're shaking your head if I do.
We were just thinking it'd be easier for us too.
Okay. Any other business? Mike, Greg? Susan?
Um, just one, one thing, so while you guys were, sorry, while you guys were talking about the growth policy, I was looking through the zoning regulations for, uh, RVs. Um, and the definition of a single-family dwelling in the zoning regulations specifically says, no mobile homes, RV, travel trailers, or, excuse me, mobile homes, RVs, travel trailers are not single-family dwellings. So that definition in my mind says you cannot live in an RV, uh, mobile home or travel trailer on an individual lot. So, but I, well, I'll, well, I'll, I just wanted you to know that for reference, but I'll work with Greg and, and Dave. And we'll, we'll put together an email or something to Al so, with all the specifics.
Okay. Okay? Okay, I sent everybody the document. You didn't get it.
I got it.
I got it.
We all got it.